All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Meeting of October 1, 2024, being called to order at 6:04 PM. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmembers Bratman-
Here.
Barbetian-
Here.
Najarian-
Here.
Mayor Asatrian and Mayor Protam Kasakian.
Here, thank you. And I am filling in as the Mayor Protam for Mayor Asatrian, who was unable to join us this evening. And she was here for the afternoon meetings, but was feeling under the weather, so we wish her well and a speedy recovery. With that, I'd like to ask everyone to rise, place your right hand over your heart, and join me in saluting the flag of our nation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and just as.
Standing for the invocation delivered by the city clerk.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tangva people. In the spirit of unity and compassion transcending the boundaries that often divide us, let us reflect on the victims of war, terrorism, violence, genocide, and forced displacement across the globe, and the families and communities within our very city that are touched deeply by these events. Let us not be mere witnesses to their suffering, but instead empathetic stewards of compassion. As we contemplate these global tragedies, let us recognize each person as a fellow human being deserving of dignity, understanding, and love. In embracing the shared threats of our humanity, let us foster an environment of empathy and grace. Thank you.
You may be seated. May we have your report, please?
Yes. The agenda for the October 1, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on September 26, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and let's move on to presentation and appointments. At 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, October 8. Mr. Tukthalian?
Good evening. Next week, we have a pretty full agenda, and the afternoon, we'll start off with our Housing Authority Meeting. One item on there, and that would be asking the Housing Authority to make findings of exemption from the State Surplus Land Act relative to an affordable housing agreement at 426 Piedmont Avenue and 507 Neronha Drive. We also have a special City Council Meeting in the afternoon with one item: Community Development will seek council's approval to accept state grant funds and authorize negotiation with up to two tech startups for the implementation of the startup growth programs. For the evening City Council Meeting, we have a number of consent items. The first from Public Works regarding the adoption of specifications for on-call fiber-optic testing, design, installation, and maintenance services. Another item from Public Works seeking an award of a professional services agreement with LA Compost to develop our food waste community compost program. That'll be followed by another report from Public Works seeking award of a contract for the Viewcrest Road Slope and Road Repair Project, and a final report from Public Works seeking award of a construction contract for on-call sewer and storm drain services. Our Human Resources Department will also provide a report associated with the International Association of Firefighters Medical Expense Reimbursement Plan, and a final contract award for the old police building, I'm sorry, it's for 140 North Isabel Building and the Civic Center Parking Garage for their stairway painting project. Two more consent items, the first being the Management Services Staff seeking council's consideration to adopt a nonprofit subsidy policy, and the final item from Community Services and Parks seeking acceptance of federal workforce innovation opportunity grant funds for the GYA. We will have one action item, and that'll be the consideration of a lease for wireless telecommunication facilities with Singular Wireless at 1880 Loma Vista Drive. That concludes next week's preview.
All right, thank you very much. And what is next?
Next is the proclamation designating the month of October 2024 as Menopause Awareness Month. Mayor Protam Kasakian, we have one public comment.
Let's have the public comment first, and then we can get into the presentation of the proclamation.
The public comment is by Mike Mohill.
Mohill, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Since you want to declare October Menopause Month, then you should also declare October as Erectile Dysfunction Month. That's right, Erectile Dysfunction Month. These are all woke ideas. You're taking the sexual agenda at Glendale Unified School District. Remember, kids are listening tonight. Thank you.
All right, with that, let me just read, and we do have someone here to accept the proclamation, if I can ask Jesse White to approach the podium, who's here from Planned Parenthood in Pasadena and San Gabriel Valley. Notwithstanding the comments just made and addressing the actual medical and physical issues and impacts of menopause on women, let me just read what this proclamation says. Whereas menopause is a natural biological process typically marking the end of reproductive years and affecting millions across the United States, including many in the city of Glendale, and whereas menopause and its related symptoms, including hot flashes, sleep disturbances, mood changes, and long-term health effects such as osteoporosis and cardiovascular disease, can have a significant impact on physical, mental, and emotional well-being, and whereas despite the universal experience of menopause, it remains under-discussed and under-researched, often leaving many without the necessary resources or support to navigate this life stage with comfort, dignity, and understanding. Whereas raising awareness about menopause is critical to eliminating the stigma and misinformation surrounding it, promoting health education, ensuring that those who experience menopause have access to appropriate medical care, workplace accommodations, and community support. Whereas the city of Glendale is committed to fostering supportive and inclusive environment for all its residents, ensuring that their health and well-being at every stage of life is prioritized through education, advocacy, and public awareness. Whereas by recognizing Menopause Awareness Month, we encourage open conversations, both in the workplace and the community, about the challenges and realities of menopause, promoting a culture of understanding and empathy. Now therefore, Ellen Asatrian, the mayor of the city of Glendale, hereby proclaims the month of October as Menopause Awareness Month in Glendale, and urges all residents, businesses, and institutions to join us in raising awareness, supporting awareness of the support and life transition, and advocating for continued research and education of menopause. So I will come down to the podium to present this to you, but please feel free to say a few words if you-
Just have a few words. My name is Jesse White, my pronouns are she, they. I am the organizing and campaign specialist for Planned Parenthood Pasadena and San Gabriel Valley. For those that are not aware, PPPS TV was established in 1933 and is California's first Planned Parenthood. We operate five health centers in northeast LA and San Gabriel Valley, serving over 60,000 patient visits annually. These patients include women, men, trans, and gender expansive individuals ranging from teens to their 50s. PPPS TV provides affordable, high-quality healthcare, which often ends up being the only medical visit for many of our patients each year. Our services include birth control, STI, HIV testing, mammograms, PAP tests, abortions, mental healthcare, and sexual education for 15,000 youth. Oftentimes, there is significant stigma associated with the healthcare needs of our patients when they come to us. So we know all too well the importance behind getting the public to embrace stigmatized health symptoms and conditions. We applaud the city of Glendale for recognizing that menopause should be destigmatized and that we should all fight to ensure that those going through menopause do not feel shame or fear to disclose their challenges, instead get the support that they need. Thank you.
All right, moving on, what is the next item on the agenda?
Next item is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. We do not have any speaker cards on this item.
Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any of the items off the consent?
No.
I would like to pull 4D.
Okay, 4D has been pulled by Councilmember Najarian. Is anyone wishing to make a motion to move the balance of the consent items?
Yeah, I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, councilmembers Bratman-
Yes.
Barbetian-
Yes.
Najarian-
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian and Mayor Protam Kasakian.
Yes. Would you please read 4D into the record?
Yes. 4D is City Attorney Regarding Requests for Proposals for Official Police Tow Services. One resolution adopting the police department's request for proposals for towing and storage services and authorizing the city clerk to advertise for proposals.
Thank you. So the city of Glendale is split up into three tow districts, and the RFP that was going to go out was to request, obviously, applications and proposals that meet the qualifications and requirements. It has been historically a challenge to draw the districts so that each tow operator in that district has approximately the same number of toes. There are requirements for each tow operator that the RFP goes through, they're rather extensive. The problem is that, no matter how we've tried to slice these districts up, there's always one district that gets the lion's share of the toes and the income, and one that is less than the lion's share. I was contacted by two of the three current tow operators, the incumbents, who suggested that rather than split the city into districts, that they have a rotating schedule where, on the first of the month, it's Operator A, on the second of the month, it's Operator B, on the third of the month, it's Operator C, and to set a calendar and a schedule where each tow operator knows that he will be covering the whole city and be able to gear up with his employees. That's really the only way to make the system fair, no matter how hard the police department and the captain in charge tries to split up those districts. Another issue is when we do have DUI checkpoints, and there are a number of individuals pulled over, those cars are towed, and few, if any, of those checkpoints are held in the districts evenly. So the district tow operator that happens to be the one that has the tow, excuse me, the DUI checkpoint, gets a lot more revenue than the others. So the suggestion that I'm making is that we look into, before we submit this new RFP, look and investigate the feasibility of having a rotating calendar, if you will, of tow responsibility that would encompass the entire city on one day for different tow operators as the calendar days march forward.
Councilmember Najarian, would you limit staff's research to only a calendar schedule, or would you open it to seek a more equitable, fair distribution of towing services?
What do you have in mind? Is there something-
I don't have anything in particular in mind, I just want to be able to, if staff, if we are not ready to vote on this, and there's consensus among council, then to allow staff greater latitude than just coming back with the one limited to the calendar dates.
Well, I wouldn't limit it. I know it's been very difficult. I've been through the TPC and through council. It's very difficult to parse the city exactly into three even districts. So I would be happy to, with that one suggestion of equity, throw that back to the police department to see if that and any other scheme would be acceptable. And as I said, two out of the three incumbents have indicated that they're okay with that, they just want to be fair. I guess they're all playing ball. I mean, it's not the Boy Scouts running their businesses, but I think they're all of the like mind that they'd like to have an equal share of the tow opportunities.
Chief Sid?
Mayor Protam, and council, councilmember Najarian, I appreciate your comments. This is something that staff, I know even before my time with the organization, has considered, as you touched on, and did so again in this sense. I'll preface everything I'm going to say by saying that there is no perfect, I think, answer to any of this. Some of the suggestions you provided, while certainly not bad and have some strengths, also come with some challenges. You mentioned rotating the districts. Do we get into a place where we start, if we happen to have a DUI checkpoint on this given month, and now we rotate, and the rotation didn't hit a given tow company for a DUI checkpoint in their month, so now we have the perception that we're somehow favoring one over the other? While I think it's accurate to say that as it's currently constructed, it doesn't always end up in an exact equitable piece, I would push back a little bit and say that I don't know that it's completely swayed to one side. We've looked at it both through populations, calls for service, and geographic size of the districts, to be mindful of things like response time, as well as if you are unfortunate enough to have your car towed, that you can respond to the yard in a reasonable time, you don't have to cross a 30-square-mile city to get to the yard. But all that said, I'm more than happy to go back, take a second look at it. The rotating thing is something staff has considered, we're not staunchly against it, but I just preface it by saying, I don't know that that's the end I'll be on, that it's going to necessarily fix some of the, we'll call them complaints or challenges that we face with the three incumbents and one anticipated new old returncomer.
Right, well, I'm not saying it, I'm not claiming that it would solve the issues, but maybe it's something to look at. I'm not sure, when does this end?
The RFP, so we have, the contract ends in July, so we've got time, and that was by design, that we wanted to give ourselves plenty of time, knowing that there would be stuff, there always is. So we've got well over seven, eight months before we're out of contract, so we have some time to take a second look at it. But again, I just want to put that out there, that we have looked at that option, it's not a bad option, but it certainly comes with its own challenges as well.
Well, I would ask council to permit the chief and his staff to go back and just take a second look, and if it makes sense to come back to us, and if it doesn't make sense, then I defer to their expertise in the issue.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to second that recommendation? Okay, there's been a motion made on 4D by councilmember Najarian, seconded by councilmember Barbetian.
Can I make a quick comment, very quick, just to say thank you for actually bringing this to us so many months in advance of the contract deadline, because I know in the past, there've been many cases, not necessarily police department, I think generally not the police department, but we've raised concerns about getting these things presented to us, and, you know, there's no time to change course because the contract is going to expire next month. So I really appreciate what you're doing.
I appreciate the comments. We are, I'll say for all staff, we're incredibly mindful of that, I'm trying to be responsive, so stay well out ahead of any timelines.
All right, thank you, chief. With that, let's have roll call on this item.
Councilmembers Bratman-
Yes.
Barbetian-
Yes.
Najarian-
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian and Mayor Protam Kasakian.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is City Council and staff comments. Is there any one of my colleagues who wishes to say a few words? I'll first turn to councilmember Barbetian.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Protam Kasakian, I attended a couple of events last week, actually three events, four events. Saturday and Sunday of last week, we celebrated the Armenian Independence Day. One was hosted here at the City Hall, the Partridge Plaza, and the other one was in Verdugo Park, that they host that event every year for, I don't know how long, for a very long time. It was a great event, family event, kids were there, good food, good music, and we all had a great time. Monday, I attended Glendale Latino Association's Back to School Mixer in celebration of Latino Heritage Month, and the interesting part was that the students who are taking culinary classes, they prepared the food for lunch for us, and it was great. I'm telling you, they did a great job, so I want to congratulate them as well. And last but not least, if I can get my phone to open on me, yes, on Friday, I had the Armenian, California Armenian Legislative Caucus Foundation had a tour of Armenian schools. One was Pilipos, and the other one, Chamillion. We had a great tour of the schools, and I haven't been there for a long, long time, and because my kids are grown and they're out of high school already, but they've done a great job on their campuses. It's very updated, upgraded. Chamillion has all of their power supplied by solar panels, they just finished that project, and just want to thank all of them for what they do for our community. It's a great, both of them are very good schools, they have a lot of challenges, but they're doing the best they can in these challenging times. So with that, Mr. Mayor Protam, I think that's all I have in the interest of time, I'm not going to go over every event that I went to. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Barbetian, and thank you for attending all those events. Yes, councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. Just one item, this week is Transit Week, and everyone is encouraged to take transit, and tomorrow is Clean Air Day. So in celebration of Clean Air Day, LA Metro, MetroLink, and many of the, in fact, our Beeline, too, are we free on the Beeline? So the Glendale Beeline, and many, if not all, of the local transit agencies are offering free transit, free rides all day. On Metro, you can even use their bike share free, and the Metro Micro Bus-Van System free as well. You do have to get on the app, and when you order, you need to order it ahead of time, obviously, and it will give you the ride for free. So everybody try and do your part to take transit, and stay out of your car. I had to drive, but I did borrow an electric vehicle today, and maybe for the rest of this week, I'll be using that. And it's good for the environment, it's good for our lungs, and please enjoy transit whenever you can. Thank you.
Councilmember Bratman?
Okay, I have a few items. One of them is drive-throughs. So as my colleagues all know, we discussed a few weeks ago the possibility of a conditional use permit for new drive-throughs in the city of Glendale. That failed, and the moratorium that we had on new drive-throughs has expired. I don't think we want to go back to the status quo simply that existed before we put the moratorium in place, because we did have concern about some drive-throughs being approved that were creating traffic havoc. So I would like to ask my colleagues if they would consider some kind of middle ground where we look at, we actually authorize staff to look at some changes in development standards, perhaps, to make sure that the most problematic outcomes don't occur. We want more tools in the tool chest to be able to do that. Perhaps a CUP that's limited to focus areas that are, you know, connected with where we want the most pedestrian activity, something so that we're not just kind of walking away from this issue, because I do think that we came into this, now it's probably two years ago, for a reason, and the reason was that there were problems with some of the drive-throughs in the city, and staff didn't feel like they necessarily had the tools to be able to make sure that the conditions were in place so that they would be effective and not create problems. So I guess I will ask for that to go on the new business agenda next week, and we can talk maybe a little bit more about it, but I'd like to see if we can find some kind of a middle ground there. The next thing I have is, has to do with lighting. I've gotten a few complaints, not a lot, I'll admit, but I've gotten some recently and some over the years about properties with very excessive illumination levels, many, many lights around them, many very bright lights. I checked in with staff, and I understand that we don't have anything in our code related to levels of illumination or number of lights, so we don't, through the design review process, really have any way of controlling that. What we do have is the ability to make sure that lights are not pointed directly at other properties or into the public right away. So I would like to see if we could have a conversation about whether we want to consider updating our development standard to address overall illumination levels. It could be brightness, it could be number of lights, that kind of thing, and if it's something that others are hearing about, that would also help, I think, in the discussion, because I'm just hearing what I'm hearing, and it's not a, it's not a groundswell of complaints, but it's, there's some. So we'll maybe just also put that on new business if we could. Two other quick things, one of them is the governor signed a bill called SB 969, which allows cities to define entertainment zones for alcohol consumption in a public space. And I think it could create a very interesting opportunity for Artsakh, where we have some changes going in there. We have a, the Paperback Brewing Company has an outlet there, and right now, the situation is that they can serve beer, people could drink it inside. I think they can drink it right, they can drink right outside the front door, but they can't take it to those tables that are in the roadway, because that's public space. But now, I think what this new bill would allow, if we chose, is we could say carve out this particular area, maybe that block on Artsakh, or maybe a sub, you know, smaller area, that would be considered an entertainment district. So I'd ask if we could look at that, and I think we probably have time, but that bill was signed, and I think it creates an opportunity. I know the mayor brought this up when Paperback Brewing did an opening over there, and she brought up the issue, you know, it seems kind of unfortunate that, you know, that space where there are tables and people want to sit and enjoy themselves can't do that. And lastly, there was another bill signed, SB 59, which I think has longer-term implications for us, but it basically instructs the California Energy Commission to consider regulations that would require EV manufacturers who sell cars in California to implement bidirectional charging, meaning that battery not only takes power from the grid, but can also deliver power back to the grid. And it's going to take a while before these regulations get developed, and we don't know exactly what the CEC will eventually do. However, I think it's something that we've known for a while is coming, and now the writing is even clear. And so I would like to, and this doesn't have to come back for a discussion, but I would like GWP to look closely at what we can do in terms of a pilot, or some way we can start getting some experience under our- some experience under our belt with bidirectional charging. Maybe we're using some of our city fleet vehicles, or something else. But just kind of want to put it out there that I would like, I think it's a good opportunity for our utility to start getting some experience with this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. I would like to just touch upon a few things. I also attended a number of the Armenian Independence Day events that were held here in the city. It was great to see these public events resuming and people coming out to support various public events. And in that vein, I know that has been a very active couple of weeks, along with the Women's Equality Day Initiative that was started by the mayor, which had a great attendance. I was unfortunately unable to attend that, but along with that, there have been so many other events. One that I was able to attend that was quite remarkable was the Pacific Standard Time, or what was formerly known as the Pacific Standard Time, the PST art exhibit. This is Southern California's premier arts event, and this year Glendale was host to one of the, I guess you can call them exhibits, collectives. It's a very unique exhibit. This is a Getty initiative, but it's in conjunction with the Jet Propulsion Laboratory. It's an interesting intersection of art and the sciences. It'll be at the Brand Library until, when will it be until then?
January 4th.
Until, I'm being told, until January 4th. So if you have a chance, go check it out. One of the exhibits, an artist had synchronized, I guess what you would call reeds, to the wind patterns on Mars. And whenever the wind shifted on Mars, you can see these reeds at the Brand Library moving, and a bunch of other cool things, including records and things that we've put on various objects that we've sent out into outer space to make contact. So go check it out and find out more about it from the website for Glendale Arts and Culture. Also, I would like to wish a very happy birthday to our 39th President, Jimmy Carter, who I believe today turned 100 years old. So it's a rare, actually, he's the first president to reach the centennial mark. For those who are trivia buffs, the next oldest president was George Herbert Walker Bush, who lived to be 94 years old. But President Carter is still with us, and we wish our beloved peanut farmer from Georgia and 39th President a very happy birthday. Also, I'd like to extend our thoughts and prayers for everyone here in Glendale, to those on the eastern seaboard in North Carolina and Florida who are suffering because of the hurricane and these extreme weather patterns. And of course, those of us who periodically get alerts on the news, our thoughts and prayers are with the people in Lebanon, with the people in Israel, for everyone in that region, all the innocent people who continue to wish for peace. In the words of Ben Franklin, there's never been a good war or a bad peace. So let's keep those families, the women, the children, the innocent, in our thoughts and prayers over the next few weeks, and hopefully what will soon be a peaceful outcome to what is a terrible, terrible man-made tragedy. With that, I have nothing else. I do have one other thing I would like to request, and this is for something to be agendized and to be looked into. We have a number of organizations, when we did the Artsakh Street Program for different businesses, nonprofits, to locate there temporarily, a number of nonprofits during this period and before have approached and said, is there space available in the city? What sort of help can the city give? Our resources are limited, but we do have an arts fund, and I would like to see if we can look into possibly creating five $12,000 grants, setting aside $60,000 a year, to give to various nonprofits, arts and culture themed organizations, to apply for these grants, receive them. Obviously, would have to go through the Arts and Culture Commission. But, you know, $12,000 may seem like a lot to some, but when you think about the cost that putting on events around the city, what it takes, it's really not much. And a lot of these organizations, especially in arts and culture, could, you know, use a helping hand. It could help offset rent at a rental space or a studio space by $1,000 a month to the right individuals. And, you know, we can make other conditions tied to this, saying that we'll give you $12,000, and for that $12,000, you have to put on two events in the city in a year's time that are open to everyone in the public. And I think if we can do that, first of all, it would really jumpstart a lot more arts and culture-related activity at a very small cost to the city, and help encourage these organizations to do more with the public. So I would like to see that agendized for staff to look into it and explore that idea. That is all. And next, we will move to community event announcements, along with, I believe, the mayor's.
Question.
Yes?
No.
This is also reserved for individuals who wish to speak for three minutes, foregoing their five minutes at the conclusion of the meeting, per the practice of our current mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Garpetian?
I just want to ask, Mr. Councilmember Bratman, as far as the, well, you know what? We'll talk about it. Is it agendas for next week?
It'll be on new business.
It'll be on new business, and then we can have a discussion.
Because we just voted on it. Are we going to bring it back and discuss the same thing again?
Or the drive-throughs, you mean?
I know, yeah. There was no vote. It was a Thai vote, I believe. No, it was, it was not a Thai vote. It failed.
It failed. There was, there were, we needed four, and there were three.
Right.
Right. So are we going to bring it back and have the same results?
No, no, no. I'm saying, let's look at some other approaches that we can take.
We could discuss it next week. That's the idea.
All right. Thank you. With that, let us go on to the speakers.
Okay. Our first speaker is Becky Gimble. Becky, you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Protam Kasakian and councilmembers. My name is Becky Gimble. I'm a resident of Glendale and a member of the Zonta Club of Burbank Area, a volunteer organization working to build a better world for women and girls, which serves the San Gabriel and San Fernando Valleys, including Glendale, through advocacy and direct service to women in need. I'm here to invite you to an exclusive screening next Thursday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Colony Theater in Burbank, of a new documentary, Scars Unseen. In honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which takes place in October, the Zonta Club of Burbank Area is screening this new film, which highlights three women who overcame domestic violence and are paying it forward. It focuses on their healing journeys, tools for resilience, and aims to de-stigmatize victimhood, encourage open dialogue, and change the conversation around abuse. Following the film, will be a Q and A discussion with the director, Meredith Yinger, and the film subject, Trish Steele, who is also the founder of Safe Passage Heels and the nonprofit partner of this event. For more information and to purchase tickets, you can visit zontaburbank.org/events. And I also have some flyers here if anyone is interested. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Protam Kasakian, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. I have a PowerPoint presentation to explain an idea that we discussed last week during the Housing Authority meeting. And it's a way of applying some of the concepts of Glendale, of transparency, efficiency, innovation, to something that is needed, I think, for all renters and property and housing providers.
This is the clock for interviews.
Thank you. The question is why a rent portal. Whenever there is a rent increase, which occurs very frequently every month, there is a landlord visit, followed by a tenant who's left concerned about this message of getting a 30-day notice or a 90-day notice of a rent increase. It occurs 45,000 times a year, and there's generally anxiety, frustration, helplessness. And the idea is to have a resource that they can access 24/7, not waiting for the city's resources to be open or telephone number to be available, and somebody to answer. The person will be able to enter the current rent, the date of the last increase, and it will calculate what the maximum rent will be for the next period. And they can answer whether the item, it will tell you what the item is legal, and then it will give you emotional relief, and it gives information as well whether there is relocation available to that tenant. So it doesn't add or detract anything from the ordinance, it just simply provides the information available. For landlords, it occurs from 2,000 to 4,000 times a year, because it is a confusing law. There's layers and layers that have been continually being added to the rental rights area, and it gets very confusing. So I figure there's another resource for landlords to do it right, to do it accurate, and to do it during multiple times of the year, as they provide those notices. The system should also be available to outsource other organizations that can also, for individuals who cannot use an app, so that they can then give that information accessible to anyone. Basically, and any organization should be able to do it. They will have a login, and then the city will be able to track the assignments that have been given, how many work, how much work they've done in the past, and check for effectiveness. So the idea basically is to try to maintain its level of control with regard to the staffing, provide a utility that is accessible to all tenants 24/7, available to landlords, and to anyone who wants to assist them, including the children of tenants who may not understand English very well. And can then use this app to be able to obtain quick answers. Anyway, that's the explanation of how to make the rental rights program accessible and more modernized. Thank you much.
Thank you. We have one caller. Thank you. The caller is Cheryl. Cheryl, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Sundale, and I currently reside at 211 Magnolia Avenue in Glendale. I was born and raised in Glendale, and I am currently reaching out. There's a lot of moving parts, but it's all urgent. I'm currently a tenant that has been yellow-tagged, along with five others, due to toxic black mold since August. I'm thinking this matter back to 2016, when I first reported it to the city of Glendale, through Inspector Michael Chung, that he assessed and eventually closed the case, following up directly with the landlord and onsite manager. And they informed me that they had corrected everything, but he never followed up. And fast forward to now, we are yellow-tagged. We have been in Airbnb for the last week. We're supposed to be out of here in the next four days with no relocation. I've looped in housing, I've looped in, you know, the city, gone to the city, to the city attorney, legal counsel, and nobody's absolutely doing absolutely nothing. My family's health has been compromised. We have taken toxicity reports. We have substantial levels of black mold. My son has become asthmatic at this point. I have no help from the rental rights, no relocation, nobody has been able to help. I've been dealing with this since 2016, and not only the city has sent me to fail us, I just have nowhere to go. Legal counsel, landlords, property management, they're not doing absolutely nothing. Andronic, Seepon have been looped in consistently, and this is why I'm here now, trying to get, see how I can get through this. You know, it's substantial, it's multiple units, and it's been pulling teeth, and I have absolutely no help at this point. And I, I'm overwhelmed, I'm stressed, and I don't know what to do anymore.
Cheryl, can I ask, do we have your phone number and name? And if not, can you remain on the line while staff gets that from you?
Yeah.
If, and staff will contact you and try to see what is available to be able to provide you with assistance. And thank you for taking the time to call.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, staff, for looking into that. Any other callers or?
No other public comments.
So that concludes item six on the agenda, and we move on to action items. May we please have 8A read into the record?
Yes. 8A is Glendale Water and Power regarding revisions to the public benefits charge reallocation of 2018-2024 PBC funds to authorize renewable energy, energy efficiency, demand response, and energy efficiency customer incentives. One, introduction of ordinance amending section 13.44.425 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 pertaining to the current public benefit charge of 3.6% to the rate mandated by state law. Two, resolution adopting 2.85% as the public benefits charge pursuant to Glendale Municipal Code 1995, section 13.44.425, effective November 7, 2024. Three, motion declaring the allocation and use of funds collected from the 0.75% increase in public benefits charge inadvertently collected from July 1, 2018, through November 6, 2024, for all authorized renewable energy, energy efficiency, demand response, and energy efficiency customer incentives. Four, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $3,394,937 from the 2018-2024 0.75% public benefit charge, plus all additional unspent PBC revenues collected therefrom through November 6, 2024, to the Home Energy and Water Savings Rebate Program to fund energy efficiency enhancements. Five, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $3,394,937 and all additional unspent revenues from the 2018-2024 0.75% public benefit charge collected through November 6, 2024, to fund energy efficiency enhancements to the Home Energy and Water Savings Rebate Program.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Yes. Mayor Protam Kasakian, member of city council. I'm just going to turn it over to Manny Robledo, our interim general manager of GWP, to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Protam Kasakian and members of the city council. I'm here to recommend a 3/4% reduction in our public benefits charge that was inadvertently overcollected from 2018 through present, and I'll get into that in a minute. And also, I'm going to recommend some enhancements to our energy efficiency programs to help our customers save energy and to reduce their electric bills. The public benefits charge was created in 1996 as part of the deregulation legislation, AB 1890, and its purpose was to ensure that programs that focus on energy efficiency and societal benefits are maintained in a deregulated environment. Back then, it was thought that electricity would become competitive, much like telecommunications. So this was their mechanism, the state's mechanism of preserving those benefits. And all utilities such as Glendale Water and Power were required to collect this money and to use it for energy efficiency, demand response, renewable energy, or low-income programs. And we've done that. In February 2008, there was another state mandate that came down under the Schwarzenegger administration to provide incentives, required utilities and cities, city-owned utilities to provide incentives for customers to put in solar power on their rooftops. And this, because it was something that was required of us, we added it on. We recommended at that time a 3/4% increase in the public benefits charge, moving it up to 3.6% for a 10-year period to cover the time that was required by law. Unfortunately, when it expired, it was, it was an oversight that it continued to be 3.6%, and it should have gone back down. So that needs to be corrected. We collected, because of that overcollection, it was 9.2 million that was overcollected. Now, 5.8 million was spent on solar incentives that went past a 10-year. So out of the 9.2 overcollected, there's 3.4 million that is surplus that's available for energy efficiency enhancements that I'll get into in a minute. So this is a recap of what was just read into the record. In order to do this, we need an ordinance to take a rate action. We also need a couple of resolutions to reallocate the funds, $3.4 million, and also appropriate the funds so they can be spent on energy efficiency enhancements. So we've taken an existing program, and we've modified the rebate amounts to incentivize customers to actually install this equipment in their homes. And by doing so, it will help them save energy and therefore save electricity costs. help them save energy and therefore save electricity costs and lower their monthly bills, especially during the summer months where air conditioning is used more than the rest of the year. So we have taken advantage of the amount of money we had, and we've significantly increased these so that we think at these levels that we will get a lot of movement, a lot of customers interested in these improvements. And we've made this accessible to all customers, including multifamily and low-income, by offering almost 100% of the cost of portable and room air conditioning, whereas the larger central air and more expensive items, the rebates will not pay. They'll pay probably about 50% of it, but the customer would have to come up with 50%. But the smaller units are almost 100% paid for, so we will get good penetration, good usage of these. So the objectives of this action would be to accelerate energy efficiency through these higher incentives, make it accessible to all customers, lower electricity bills, particularly during the summer, and provide enduring energy savings and peak load reduction within our electrical system. And finally, the energy savings would also result in less greenhouse gas is being emitted by the plants generating electricity. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this? Councilmember Najarian.
So when will these rebates be effective? The increase in rebates be effective?
As soon as the, in November it will be. As soon as the, the rate action will be, I think there's a 30-day waiting period for the ordinance, and then we have to get, we have to get them on the website. We have to get, we are also going to do a promotion for these. We're looking at our traditional outreach through our website and email, but we're also looking at enhanced outreach through paid social media advertising that would target Glendale in particular. So this is something new we've done, and we think it'll be effective to get the word out so people will know about these.
And how long will they last? Till the money runs out, until it runs out?
Until it runs out. And then it'll revert back down to the lower numbers. You'll see 80, 60. So it'll go back down to where it was, and that'll come out of the regular 2.85. So we're not getting rid of the program. We're just moving it back to the state mandated level of 2.85%.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bronwyn.
The, well, I guess, let me start with this one. How do we make sure residents aren't left holding the bag if, for instance, they, you know, go to Home Depot or wherever they might, or they work through a contractor, they purchase this equipment, they're applying for the rebate, lo and behold, the money's gone, and they're stuck with, without, you know, without a rebate that they had counted on? How do we make sure that that doesn't happen?
When, the 3.4 million is a significant amount, but there will come a time when we go back down. We're going to provide notice on the website and so that it will no longer be there. But I think we will provide a date, maybe 90 days. We haven't worked through that completely, but a 90-days notice period so that that will not happen, hopefully. And if it does, we have not had a problem with this to date. We have other funds, public benefit funds that could be used to bridge the gap. But there will become a time where everything's installed, and then on our website, in our publications, it's the, we will change back to the other rate.
Change back to what other way?
To the other rebate amount, which is lower rebate amount.
Right. Right. I just, I want to make sure that we have some mechanism so that if, you know, if somebody is counting on this and they initiate a project, how can they make sure that the money is going to ultimately be there for them? Within a certain timeframe of them, I'm sure that we have, what, 90 days or 180, a certain timeframe after they purchase this equipment in order to get the rebate, right?
We can take a predictive look at it and kind of predict when it's going to end and then start making those notices. So maybe it's more than 90 days, maybe it's six months. We'll work with, we will make a note of that and make sure that we provide notice, but we also, we don't leave anybody holding the bag, as you said.
Okay. Let me change the topic a little bit. How much of this pot of money will be going toward air conditioning, and how much towards these other types of rebates?
It's really up to the customer. But I think the portable air conditioners will probably become very popular because they're almost free. And then I think the larger units require more of an investment by the customer. So I don't have those figures. We could get those figures for you if you'd like to see them. But they would just be estimates based on our previous experience with these programs. But because of these significant enhancements, as I said, they probably will be more popular than our previous program.
But couldn't we earmark a certain amount for each of these rebate programs? And the reason I'm getting to this, and you, I'm sure you know, because we talked about it during the briefing, but the one thing that's going to get us the maximum benefit as far as peak load reduction is the air conditioning, right? Our peak load occurs in the summer afternoon, evening, when it's very hot. People are running the air conditioning, and we know that's kind of the main issue that we have with our capacity, right? So that should be really where we want to focus any monies that we have. I mean, the other things are all important, right? Weatherization and refrigeration and all that. I'm not saying they're not important, but if you want the best benefit, you know, to the system, it would be, it would be air conditioning. So how do we make sure that that's where the money goes? Or we, can earmark the vast majority of the money go to that?
See, I agree with your sentiment, and I want the peak load reduction, but I don't think putting a limit, I think there's going to be plenty of money. And we have, in addition to this 3.4 million, we still have about 11 million of the regular PBC funds. So I, we set these rates. We went from 250 per tonne. We doubled the rate of the central air. We did put the most emphasis in the carrot, if you will, and the stick into air conditioning because we wanted air conditioning. But I don't think a limit is necessary because there's plenty of money.
But it will run out. So, okay. Well, those are my questions. I have comments. You know, there's some things, I have some concerns about this, but I'll maybe hold off until we're in comments. Maybe there's-
Let me ask Councilmember Garpen. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Okay, please.
So for six years, every account, GWP account in Glendale paid 0.75% more. That added up to be around 3 point, almost $4 million.
It was actually 9.2 million. I'll put that slide back up. So at the bottom here, it's 9.2 million was overcollected. But out of that, we spent, on the allocated purpose, we've spent 5.8 million on the solar, which was-
Solar incentives, basically. Okay. So what's left in our pot is about 3.4 million.
Yes.
So that public benefit charge that we pay every month in general, it goes mostly helping low-income people? A portion of it goes to low-income people on their bill?
A portion of it, but not-
How much is it a month per account?
It's, the most used one is $26 per month for low income.
$26? Only $26?
Yeah.
Okay. And it says it doesn't matter where the equipment, or the furnace, or the stove, or whatever, is purchased inside Glendale or outside Glendale, it applies. But they have to be Glendale residents. Am I correct?
They have to be Glendale residents and account holders. They get their, it's a reduction in their bill, yeah.
It's a reduction of your bill. And some of these equipments, like the furnace for electric heat pump, water heaters, or the air conditionings, it's not just changing the air conditioning, right? You have to do other improvements in order for your, if you have an older house that has 100 amps, this may, and you're changing two of these appliances, you may get some relief on the price, but you have to do some upgrades to your wiring and panel upgrade or what have you in order for you to be able to use this equipment. Am I correct?
Sometimes. Sometimes you're replacing maybe a 20-year-old unit. You already have central air, and then you're operating a more efficient one. It's required that the new equipment be Energy Star, and Energy Star is the most efficient equipment. So, but you are correct. In some cases, if they've never had central air, these little mini-split units, like the one shown in this picture, where you have, it's above a doorway, that requires electric line, and it requires the plumber to put in the freon lines in the wall. And so it would require, and that's why I said that may not be accessible to multifamily or renters or low-income, but that's why we provided the money for the portable and window air conditioners that would be accessible to the, because those are almost free. But if you do the upgrade, we are providing a significant incentive, up to $2,500. But let's say it costs $6,000, then they would have to pay whatever the difference is.
And the upgrade on wiring or what have you.
Yeah.
I think, I agree. I think the air conditioning would be one of the items that will have the most demand because all the apartment building owners can use that if they have a, because most of them have the heat pump air conditioning anyways. If they want to upgrade it, it's much easier for them to use that, this program to upgrade their air conditioning, as well as condominiums, whoever owns a condominium. Because I think when you say public benefit, what do we call it? Public benefit charge, it's, I understand we want to benefit the public, but mostly people who are more in need than not. So if there is a big house being remodeled or what have you, I know they can use that as well, which is okay. But I think most of you have to be cognizant of the fact that this was created to help people in more need than the others. So, and also, one last thing here is the, some of the prices that I see here, like the water heater, because we had this, we had a report on our reach code, and they had some prices for all these furnaces and equipments and everything. And water heater was there like for $600, an electric water heater. It was indicated it was six, the cost is $600. But here, I see that it's a lot more than that.
Yeah, we specified a heat pump water heater, which are approaching 2,000, 1,500 to 2,000, depending on the size. The heat pump water heaters are more expensive because they actually have a heat pump. It has refrigeration, but it is much more efficient. So even though it's electric, old school, you would say if you have electric dryer, it's more expensive. But now with the new technology, it's actually less expensive because it draws heat from the atmosphere. And so it is more expensive to purchase, but it's less expensive to operate, and that's why it can be cost-effective. And with our incentive, then it's, it might actually get done. Because if someone has a failed water heater and they want to upgrade, now they have to, not only replace the cost of the water heater, let's say they get a gas water heater for $700. If they go to electric, then they have to find electricity, and they have to, so we think this incentive is the right amount to entice people to do it.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions? If there aren't, maybe we can start with comments.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anybody.
No, there are no speakers?
There's no speakers on this? Okay. Well, there are a few things about this that I'm concerned with. One of them is fundamentally what we're doing with the public benefit charge. I mean, I was surprised when I read this because I, you know, I thought that many years before I came to council, this council, or, well, a previous council had decided in its wisdom to increase the public benefit charge to 3.6%. So I had no idea of that, you know, there was this difference between the 2.86 and the, or 2.85 and the 3.6. And I would, you know, I would like us to look at the possibility of keeping it where it is. The reason for that is that because of the way we do cost of service, because of the, you know, Prop 218 and the other legislation that's out there, we are not able to provide subsidies to low-income residents, except through a program like this. This is the only place, other than our general fund, right? We could, we could pull more money from GWP through the transfer, and we could take some money out of our general fund, and we could use that to help people, you know, low-income seniors, people on fixed incomes that are struggling with their utility rates. The problem that when we give this up, we lose that. So I think, all things being equal, I would prefer to keep it at the level that it's at, and then use that money very, in a very targeted way, to support our seniors, to support people at, you know, lower income who are really struggling right now with these, with these high utility rates. So that would be my preference, is I'd like to look at that and see whether that's legally possible, and then see what more we could do to help our lower-income residents, not just the whatever, what was that number? 20-some dollars a month or something like that, but something more substantial.
Yes.
That would be the direction I'd like us to consider going. But that's one thing, right? And I don't know if legally, that's something we can do. And I think, I spoke to the city attorney, and I think they still need to look into that. So we might not have the answer to that today, unless-
That's correct. If that's, if the council wants to go in that direction, we would need some additional time to research that.
Again, that's a place where we can, we can build up a pot of money that we can direct to low-income residents, and we can't do that through cost of service. This is the only way we can do that. So that's, that's one thing. The other, the other thing is, I think our whole approach to providing these kinds of energy efficiency rebates really needs to be reconsidered. You know, we put these up on our website, or we'll send out flyers and notices, and we'll say, hey, you can come and apply for this. But by and large, a lot of people who maybe aren't strong with the English language, or who just don't have the wherewithal, people of lower income, generally are not going to take advantage of this. It's confusing. It's complicated. I really think we need to, and I brought this up before, we really need to think about building a more, more like a concierge service, where we, just like our Home Energy Audit, but kind of take that up to the next level, right? And for those of you who don't know, the Home Energy Audit, you can have somebody come out to your home, they'll look around, and they'll show you, you know, things, simple things you can do to be more energy efficient. Generally, what they're doing is they're changing out your lighting to LEDs. It doesn't cost you anything. It's a great service. But how do we take that up to the next level where somebody would go into a home, a condo building, an apartment, whatever, and work with the, with the resident and say, you know, here are some things you can do. And you can do, you know, your windows, and you can do insulation, and you can do this and that and the other thing. And then help, you know, analyze, what's the cost, what are the costs and what are the benefits? How much is it going to cost me upfront? How much is it going to lower my utility bill over time? When am I going to break even? Am I going to break even after two years, three years, whatever? And then help handhold the resident, not just through these rebates, but we know there's money from the Inflation Reduction Act. That's for a lot of these similar things. And we know that there's tax incentives from the IRS, 30% on a lot of things. How do we help bundle all that so that we're really bringing our residents all the benefits of what's out there to help them become more energy efficient, lower their bills? So I, I, I'm not saying like, don't do this, but I really would like us to kind of raise our, kind of raise our game, up our game a little bit, and then how we get the benefits of all these rebates and all the ones that are coming from, from the federal government and the state into the, into the hands of our residents. And those are, those are really my, my main issues.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Garpetian?
Yeah, I think with all the rate increases that we had, I mean, what are your suggestion is not to reduce the rate by .75 and keep it as is?
Well, I'm saying keep it as is across the board, but then take that money and direct it specifically to our lower-income customers.
Right. We, you know, we had that money, and that's, that's the thing I was talking about this afternoon in one of our sessions, that we did have $9.2 million that we, but we allocated those funds for solar incentives. And most people who install solars are homeowners. And every time you install solar on your house, my bill goes up. So, because there's a fixed cost of the utilities, that if 1,000 people are paying, if 5 of them installed solar, now 995 of them are paying the same cost. So we had that 9.2 million, but we used that for solar incentives, and now we are left with 3.4 million. I, I don't, I don't know, I have mixed feelings about it with the, all the rate increases that we had, and we are going to have it next two or three years. I, I don't want to add to that. What we are getting on yearly basis is how much on, if it stays at 2.9, whatever that amount is, 9%?
It's like 1.8 million. I, I'd like to respond if, when the comments are completed, I'll respond. But it's about 1.8 million per year, and we haven't spent that. We actually have over $10 million. So I, I agree with Councilmember Rotman that we need to do better getting the word out and helping our customers partake in these benefits. And one of the things that I mentioned earlier was a targeted social media outreach. So we want to get in front of our customers so they know that these exist. But in addition to that, our auditing program that was primarily focused on lighting, was focused on LED lights and reducing their bill through lighting, that's coming, that's going to be expiring, and we're going to do an RFP. In the RFP, we're going to have a more expansive audit program, where they will look at not just lighting, but also air conditioning, and, and leave a, a report with our customers to show them the, not only our benefits, our rebates, but also the Inflation Reduction Act that is going to be administered through the county, and the tax credits that may be available, depending on their tax situation. So I, I agree, we agree with the concierge service, and we're going to work on something. And in addition to that, because we have a balance in the PBC fund, which is separate, we can't use it for, for electric activity, we're going to come back with a low-income program that's targeted for heat waves. So when the, the high bills do come because of the heat wave, it'll be triggered, weather triggered, then they will be eligible for an immediate rebate. The reason we didn't bring it now is we have to look at the, the population of low-income and see what their bills are. It takes a little bit more analysis to develop that program, but we will be coming back to city council with a low-income program funded by the original state-mandated PBC fund. And the 3.6 would not be necessary for that program.
Question. No, sorry?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Currently, that public benefit charge of 2.85% a year, is that like 10 to 12 million dollars a year?
No, it's 1.8 million per year. But it's.
No. What is it? No, it's like nine.
It can't be 1.8.
May I have?
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
The numbers person.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council. The 2.85 generates about 8.9 million in recurring revenue. The 3.6 is about 10, like 10.4 million, so the difference is about a million eight.
Let's say, let's round it up to $9 million a year. How do we spend that? Are we using that, those funds to help people who have utility accounts with us, and they're low-income, and it's only if it's $26, it's not a big dollar amount?
The $26 program is about a $2.7 million appropriation in the budget, so.
So what happens to the rest of the funds?
So they get spread between all the different programs that are in PBC. There's different things, there's solar programs, there's different care programs for people who have, let's say, medical equipment at, at home, they get discounted rates because they have to run a medical equipment. There's all these different programs that are sponsored. The one that is in question, the one we're discussing, is the $26 a month. That's $2.7 million out of the 2425 budget allocated towards discounting the rates for low-income.
Okay. So we have enough money as it is with 2.85% to help the low-income families that are in trouble? So we have enough, if they need more, we can allocate more from that 2.85%. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but most, half of this money goes to solar programs. I'm not against.
No, no. There's no more solar.
Not any longer. Not any longer.
Not any longer, okay. So adding another .75% to it is going to generate, what, another $2 million, something in that range? Yeah?
1.8 million.
1.8 million dollars. So is that going to go to, towards the low-income families? Is that the proposal, or it's going to?
We are not recommending that. We're recommending to reduce it. So if, if, if the council wants us to look at that, it, it would, initial conversations is it could not be done in public benefits. It would have to be done in electric fund, and have to involve a rate case where the money would be collected and allocated to the different rate classes, and Adurna is in charge of our rates, so I'll let her opine on that.
Yes, so the electric fund is COSA-driven, so if we wanted to use the electric funds to, to discount low-income or any kind of discount, we can't really set up a percentage. Yeah, you have to set up a cost first, and then try to recover those costs. So you wouldn't be able to do it through the electric fund. These are just additional state-mandated fees that are passed on to the customer, and that's how we're able to recover it. Otherwise, it could be considered a tax and so on.
COSA's cost of service analysis.
Mrs. Cyan, would you please state your name and what you do for our viewers at home?
Sure, sorry. Adurna Cyan, and this is the general manager overseeing finance and risk for GWP.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Councilmember Rotman?
Yeah, I just, just to be really clear, so what, what I'm kind of saying is, let's say the, the difference between the 2.85 and the 3.6 you're saying is about 1.8 million. The current program for low-income, the one that gives $26 a month, is?
The allocation is $2.7 million out of the 2425 budget.
2.7. So the kind of thing that's in my mind is like, we keep the 3.6, we don't lower it, and we turn around, and we, and that low-income program, rather than being 26 a month, maybe we can get that up to 35 a month. That's kind of where I'm coming from. Because we can't, that's the only way we can do that.
Sure, but we also have fund balance in the fund that's accumulated over the years, so we have about $15 million in this fund that could be allocated towards additional programming. So I want, that's important to mention.
But then it'll run out. It'll run out.
It'll run out over multiple years if you're going to continue to increase the allocation year over year, yes.
But my question is, if you want to increase it from $26 to $35, why can't we do it within that 2.85% rate that we have right now?
You can, we, you could either do it every month, or we're proposing to do it during heat waves. But, but either, either way, we could, that's what we're proposing, is to come back with that program. I think the mayor also was interested in low-income programs, so we were, we're working on that, and we are going to bring it back.
You'd be bumping something else out.
Or you could be using fund balance.
Well, I think we have the fund balance because some of these programs are undersubscribed. And so if people were partaking, if we were spending every dollar per year, we'd be bumping something out, but it seems like at the current rates, they're not. So we think that we can fund this low-income program for several years, and then we, we deal with it if it was oversubscribed.
Adurna, the current rate plan is four years?
Yes.
So, I mean, that's another thing to keep in mind, and we'll be looking at rates again in 2027. So maybe you decide whether or not, what's available now in the fund balance for PBC, plus the additional PBC funds you'll be getting over the next three fiscal years, well, that's enough to fund what you, what the council wants, and then when we come back in 27, we can, you can look at it again. That's another way to do it.
Well, let me ask my colleagues if there's any desire with a specific motion to move forward with. I will say for myself, first of all, it's, no one ever likes to see themselves overcharged, but as long as we're trying to provide some incentives and benefits to the public because of these errors, I support it. What I'd like to know is, how long do you think, well, how long will the program run, and at what point can you come back to us and give us a report as to the efficacy of your proposed, whether it's the, the rebates or the other benefits?
We think it'll run at least a year, and we can come back in about a year and provide. There's, there's enough money for a year, and then after that, the 3.4 is exhausted, or we can come back, you know, when we expect it to exhaust and give a report. But I think the city attorney provided a good point, is that for the low-income, the low-income can stay in the public benefits charge, and we can move the energy efficiency and the renewables and the demand response into the electric fund, but that has to be done with a, a cost of service analysis, part of the rate study. So to make room for the low-income, that's a possibility, and I'd ask, do you agree with that?
I, I do.
Yeah.
So for these proposals, could you, within six months of us approving it, come back and tell us how successful they have been in implementation?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fine. And I think before that, we're going to come back with a low-income program and a proposal for the replacement of the audit program. So there'll be two opportunities for, to ask about it, but we will make time-certain six-month report on how this enhancement is working.
With that, with that. Yeah, I can live with that. Yeah, I can live with that. And, and just as, as, you know, from one council member, the direction being, would be, I would like to enhance that low-income support. You know, I know there are different approaches to do it, but I think that 26 a month really is not really going to make a difference, especially with where rates are today. So I'd like to see us, how we can, how we can enhance that, and especially focus on the fixed costs, not the variable costs.
Thank you. Duly noted. Councilmember Najarian, do you have anything that you wish to add or say on this item?
No, I don't.
Would you be comfortable with the proposal of moving forward with these with a check back in six months?
Are we, are we keeping that .75%? Or we are reducing it to 2.85?
No, we're reducing it. We're reducing, we're doing what they're.
The recommendation is to reduce it.
So then you need an introduction in 8A1, and then adoption of 8, 8A2 through five.
Who would like to introduce it?
8A1, I'll, I'll introduce the ordinance, 8A1. And we have to, we have, what, a resolution and?
They're separate resolutions, but they all, they all, I mean, they can be adopted now, or we could bring them back next week.
Okay, so I can introduce the ordinance.
Yeah.
And then I can move the four.
Should we, do we need to bring the resolutions back next week? They can adopt them today.
But can they also be acted upon?
Yeah, they can be adopted now. They'll, they'll be subject to the ordinance taking effect, but that would be our recommendation.
Okay, so I'll move A, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Are we okay with that?
Good evening. We could adopt the resolutions tonight, councilmembers. They would be effective, the, the resolution setting the PBC charge will be effective on November 7th, which is 30 days after the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, that's fine, but we can do it now.
Okay, so I'll move, I've adopted, I mean, I'm introducing the ordinance, and I'll move A, 8A, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Second. All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Rotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kasakian.
Yes, thank you. All right, next item, 8B, please.
Next item is Public Works regarding authorized cooperative agreement for Foothill Boulevard traffic signal synchronization program. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute a cooperative agreement between the City of Glendale and the County of Los Angeles for the Foothill Boulevard TSSP. Two, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $499,800 in Measure R local return funds for the Foothill Boulevard TSSP.
All right, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Protem Kasakian, members of city council, Pastor Casanova, our principal traffic engineer, will take this on and present the item for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mayor Protem Kasakian and members of the city council, the Foothill Boulevard Traffic Signal Synchronization Project is part of a grander, larger-scale traffic signal synchronization program that is managed and implemented by the Los Angeles County Department of Public Works, with financial assistance from various sources, including grants from Metro. The program typically upgrades traffic signals along a arterial route to allow for improved traffic signal synchronization, while also improving the traffic signal equipment for other uses such as improved vehicle detection that can detect bicycles, and pedestrian safety improvements such as improved traffic signal, improved pedestrian traffic signals, and push buttons that also allow for audible and sensory cues to the blind. The County of Los Angeles received a Metro grant to fund a portion of the Foothill Boulevard improvements, with, and including the portion within the City of Glendale. The City of Glendale's local match for the improvements within Glendale is $313,200, plus a contingency amount in construction engineering and inspection amount of $186,600. Staff proposes to use Measure R local return funds to fund the city's local match portion of the project. Therefore, staff is here today to respectfully request the city council to authorize the execution of a cooperative agreement between the County of Los Angeles and the City of Glendale for the program, as well as adopting a resolution of appropriation from the Measure R local return funds to fund Glendale's portion of the project. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. So this is just making sure that everything along that stretch, or the panhandle of Glendale, is synchronized with the areas on either side of it?
That is correct, Mayor Protem.
So is there anyone that has any questions or additional comments on this item?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Rotman.
And it's not, not, you know, that I have a major problem with it, or even a minor problem with it, but I, but there's something that we talked about in briefing, and, and maybe you can explain it. So I, I know years ago in another city I lived in, they had synchronized signals, so if you were traveling along roadway, and you're going even 5 or 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, you won't really benefit because you'll get to a red light, right? Whereas if you travel at the speed limit, you'll continuously get greens, right? And I think that's what we want with signal synchronization. What I understand here, because of the way we do it, if you're traveling at the speed limit, you will get those greens. That's, that's good, right? But if you're traveling above the speed limit, you may also get those greens. It depends on whether the traffic signal is activated by somebody on a side street. So if there's nobody on a side street, it will just stay green, correct? And I know that's the way this, this whole Foothill corridor is set up, that's fine, but I would like us to, to kind of work towards an environment where we can manage speeds by making it, you know, making there be no incentive to go fast. And, you know, I don't know if that can be done here. I'm sure it's complicated, like all these things are, because they're knock-on effects, but it's something I would like staff to look at. Glen Oaks is another example. Wherever we can, try to design synchronization such that it keeps people at the speed limit.
Certainly, Councilmember Rotman, and to, to add to that, traffic signal synchronization is configured really to synchronize under peak-hour traffic conditions, to make the system as, as efficient as possible. But certainly by upgrading the equipment that we have out in the field right now, the traffic signal equipment, it does give us better tools to be able to address the concerns you brought up, and working collaboratively with the police department to address issues that there are particular times of the day, such as racing at night, as we've been advised on Glen Oaks Boulevard, we certainly now would have the equipment on Foothill Boulevard to be able to address that.
Okay, which is good, and I'd just like.
such as racing at night, as we've been advised on Glen Oaks Boulevard, we certainly now would have the equipment on Foothill Boulevard to be able to address that.
Okay, which is good. And I'd just like us to to look at that. You did mention to me at night, we do that on Glen Oaks, or we're thinking of doing that on Glen Oaks, where it would it would, you know, limit speeding. And maybe we can do that at night also on Foothill and elsewhere where we have that capability.
And that is correct. We do have the program on Glen Oaks Boulevard, and we certainly could look into that on Foothill Boulevard as well.
Okay, thanks.
Any, yes, Councilmember Najarian.
Yeah, but doesn't doesn't this agreement say that we are giving the the duty to synchronize to the county on this? I mean, it's not like, doesn't matter what we want. It's the county that's synchronizing those lights. Is that correct?
Yes.
Page 2 out of 10, it says, whereas the county agrees to be responsible to perform or cause to be performed the et cetera, et cetera. Coordination, traffic signal timing for the project.
Yes, Councilman Najarian, that is correct. The county will, as part of this project, help configure the synchronization for those peak hour traffic times. However, if the city has particular needs, we do manage our own timing at the signals within the City of Glendale. So we could certainly look into other programs based on on need.
Okay, that's not what the agreement says, but that's if you say we can do it.
Or we can talk to the county and maybe do it together.
We can just not synchronize it. That would give a, do we want it synchronized or not?
I think it's good.
To a certain speed?
I mean, ideally, that's that's the ideal scenario, but it sounds like it sounds like this will give us the tools because we'll have the the fiber infrastructure and we'll have the upgraded signals. And maybe we can talk to the county and see if it's something that collaboratively we want to do across the whole corridor. I mean, it would make more sense not just to do it in our little piece, but to do it all across. But anyway, it sounds like that's something staff can look into later.
Let me allow Councilmember Garpetian to ask.
No, no, I don't have any questions. I just, I was just listening. I don't have any questions on it. I mean, it's synchronized, synchronized anytime you want to make adjustments, you can make adjustments to get to the goals that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, as opposed to Glen Oaks, as you mentioned, which is our, which would be up to us through the City of Glendale. We're a little bit more restricted as we cross the jurisdictional lines.
Yes, that that is correct. And to clarify, there's six traffic signal intersections that are part of this project within the either completely within the City of Glendale or a portion of. The signal at Lowell is partial within the City of Los Angeles and Glendale. And Glendale operates and maintains that signal, so we can adjust timing there. There's four other signals in between that are fully City of Glendale, so we can fully adjust those whenever we need to. And then the signal at Foothill in Pennsylvania is also a joint between City of Glendale and the County of Los Angeles, but that one, the County of Los Angeles operates and maintains. So certainly, they have the purview of the operation there.
Right, that clears a lot up. Is there anyone willing?
I'll move the item if unless anybody has any other questions.
Item was moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, councilmembers Botman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatryan and Mayor Protam Kasakyan.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next is City Manager regarding appointments to fill vacancies on various agencies. One motion designating a voting delegate and alternate representatives for the 2024 League of California Cities Conference. Two, motion appointing an individual to serve as an alternate on the Arroyo Verdugo Communities JPA. Three, motion appointing an individual to serve as an alternate on the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Regional Housing Trust. Four, motion appointing two individuals to serve as primary and alternate on California Contract Cities Association. And five, motion appointing two individuals to serve as a primary and alternate on Independent Cities Association.
All right, so this is the last item on the agenda. And how soon everyone gets to go home and watch the remainder of the vice presidential debate, it relies on how much time we spend on this. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Galanian.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Kasakyan, a member of City Council. Back in July, City Council requested that staff provide information on vacancies and attendance records for external boards and commission. Those two lists are attached to the staff report if you like to take a look. And staff has identified currently five vacancies on five bodies that the city clerk read into the record. I can take them one by one if you like to nominate persons to represent, to be cities representative on these boards.
Why don't we just ask who wants them?
All right, is there anyone? Well.
Botman, you want the housing authority to continue on that housing trust?
If I if I make council manager, I think it'll be more efficient if I go through them quickly. League of California Cities Annual Conference, the General Assembly, one meeting a year. This year is going to be from October 16 to the 18th. And we need voting delegate and alternate.
Who is going to the conference from here?
Where's it located?
Long Beach.
I'm attending. I think I've RSVP'd already.
The mayor told me that she she would do it if we want her to. She gave me her list, by the way, because she's not.
Is there anyone else who's going? Because I'm happy to be the alternate, but I'm also happy to have anyone.
I would let the mayor have preference in that.
So mayor will be primary and you'll be alternate. Okay.
Okay, so we got that one.
All right.
Arroyo Verdugo Communities JPA, they meet twice a year in February and July. Pasadena City Hall, we have Councilmember Botman as the primary. We need an alternate.
Would like to serve as alternate to the Arroyo Verdugo Communities JPA. Don't all jump at once.
And if I might, I think they meet more than they meet more than twice a year. I think I think it's generally four times a year.
Okay.
Usually the mayor is the alternate.
Sure. Then let's appoint. So we're volunteering.
Well, Mr. Botman is.
I have on the list that she doesn't want to do that.
Doesn't want to do it. So you've had a chance to speak there.
And I generally don't miss them, but we do need to have an alternate.
He's already the primary.
We need an alternate.
Yeah, we need an alternate.
Do you go to all the meetings?
I generally, I don't think.
Maybe we don't need an alternate.
No, they want us to have an alternate, though. We just need to name somebody.
Could the alternate work between council members? Or it has to be?
That's a good question. No?
They just want one name. And again, Councilman Botman typically attends all of these.
Maybe the city manager.
I suppose.
Shay.
No, because one of the members is staffer for Catherine Berger.
Okay, we'll put the city manager in.
If he he's a voting member, so if he can do it, I would assume city manager could do it.
Okay, all right.
Burbank Glendale Pasadena Regional Housing Trust, the report says four to six times a year. Councilmember Botman is the primary representative. We need an alternate.
Would like to be the alternate for that trust, the housing trust.
The mayor told me she would do it if asked.
Okay, all right, we will. I think it's fine for the mayor to be in that role. Sure. Next is.
California Contract Cities Association, they meet monthly. The primary and alternate positions are both vacant.
So for these two, would it be possible to have the mayor be the representative to these meetings? And as the mayor rotates out, the next mayor would be the person? Because for most of these associations, whether it's Contract Cities or the ICA, I think there's an expectation that the mayor attends.
You're correct.
Would that be?
I like that.
Agreeable to everyone? That way, everyone at some point will get to serve on it? So let's have the mayor be the primary. And if there's no objection to it, we can have, if there's a mayor protam that month for when the meeting is held and the mayor cannot fill in, the mayor protam would serve as alternate.
Actually, I was on their board, and that's not how it was.
No, so Councilmember Garpetian, what would be a better way to proceed?
I was on their Board of Directors in the past, and because their meetings are not in one location. Sometimes it's in Artesia, sometimes it's on the other side. So it's 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 a difficult task. And as far as I remember, it was not the the mayors that represented the city. It was people who, because they're adamant about people attending these meetings. They're they're really, they tell you in the beginning, if you you want to get on the board, you have to come to the meetings because they have so many people just keeping keeping the the city warm, if you will.
So I'm sorry, I'm hearing staff say something. Mr. Tuktong, did you have something to clarify?
I don't believe you can have a rotating alternate. And the reason behind that is oftentimes there is a set of bylaws that govern the the structure of how these entities work. And I I'm beginning to think about vote by proxy. And and some of the they may have restrictions in their bylaws. We would have to go back and look at those.
Okay.
Or perhaps whoever's on the housing authority can serve as the alternate? Because then at least it's consistent for the year. And then we swap it out each year. Would that work?
That that could work, as long as we give them one name and that person is entitled to go and actually vote on behalf of the organization in either a primary or secondary alternate capacity. That should be fine.
Well, I'm interested in in becoming the member of the contract cities, but if it's.
If you are, that's fine. I know you served on it before.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, if the decision is that the mayor has to serve, I don't have an issue with that either.
No.
Well, I would I would then be for.
Member, not as an alternate.
Okay.
So for California Contract Cities Association, Councilmember Garpetian as primary?
Sure. I'm happy with that. And then maybe whoever is the mayor at the time can be the alternate. Sure. I know that Councilmember Garpetian served on it before, and would like to continue serving. That's fine.
And Independent Cities Association, apparently they meet via Zoom.
So I do think it's appropriate to have the mayor be the primary on that. And then if we make the housing authority chair the alternate, that's fine. I know that would I know that would make me the alternate, and I'm fine with it if I'll pinch it if I need to. So we have, you've been given those directions. Is there a motion to adopt all these?
Can we move it all together?
Yes, as long as you're in consensus on what was discussed.
Want to read back or?
We can, yeah. So for League of Cities, the mayor will be the voting delegate, and Councilman Kasakyan will be the alternate. For Arroyo Verdugo, city manager was selected as alternate for the Burbank Regional Regional, Burbank Glendale Pasadena Regional Housing Trust. Mayor Kasakyan will be the alternate. For the Contract Cities, Councilmember Garpetian will be the primary, and whoever is the mayor at the time will serve as the alternate. And then for Independent Cities, the mayor, whoever's the mayor at the time will be the primary, and whoever's the housing authority chair will be the will be the alternate.
All right, with that, there has been a motion and second. It was moved by Councilmember Najarian and seconded by Councilmember Garpetian, I believe.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine. They accept it. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Botman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatryan and Mayor Protam Kasakyan.
Yes, thank you. Next is, I believe, since we have no written communication reports, oral communication. Do we have any cards or callers?
We have one card. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. And our one speaker is Shane Lee.
All right, you all have five minutes.
All right. Hello, Mayor Protam, City Council, and staff members. My name is Shane Lee, and I'm the one of the founders of Glendale YMB. We're a pro-housing organization. I just want to take this time to express, first of all, how much I love Glendale. I really do love living here. I appreciate the work you do. I think it's a great place. And I want more people to live here, and I couldn't imagine living anywhere else. And that's why we are opposed to the Verdugo Woodlands Historic District. So I wanted to spend some time talking about why I don't think it should be implemented. Historic districts are wealth preservation tools. Glendale is already unaffordable for low-income people such as myself. I'm already struggling to move out on my own and find an affordable place to live. And this historic district would make housing more expensive, not less. California does not have a shortage of overpriced single-family homes, but we do have a shortage of smaller, affordable units. And I think this historic district would increase the already, it would raise property values, which would make housing less affordable. I think that the Verdugo Woodlands is a wonderful community, and I and I love the community. And I think we should do everything we can to welcome people to that community by building more housing rather than making it harder to build more housing. I don't think anyone should ever be excluded from living in the woodlands because they have low income. I think even middle-income and hard-working folks cannot afford to cannot afford to buy a home in the woodlands. It's a really nice area, but there's just not enough housing there. And that's why the prices are so high. And I think we need to build more housing there to lower prices. The woodlands are really close to job centers and recreational amenities, such as Montrose, GCC, the Sports Complex, United Artists Theaters, the YMCA, and the Keck Medical Center. It's a fantastic place to raise a family, which is exactly why Glendale should incentivize development here, not disincentivize it. I think Glendale should be making it easier for property owners to subdivide their lots into smaller and more affordable units. I think that if this unnecessary historic district is implemented, property owners will have a harder time taking advantage of SB 9 by splitting their lots. And on the website of the Verdugo Woodlands Homeowners Association, they explicitly state that a historic district would, quote, exempt your neighborhood from new state laws that allow developers to build four units or more where one single-family house now stands. That's a good thing. We should be encouraging property owners if they want to subdivide their lots. We should not be making it harder to do so. I also think that this it's that this historic district would exclude people from Verdugo Woodlands when we should be trying to include people by building more housing for them so they can live there. I'd love to live in the Verdugo Woodlands, but I can't afford it. And that's because housing is scarce, whereas we think that housing should be abundant. Additionally, I, yeah, so this, the housing prices in the Verdugo Woodlands are already about $1.1 million. That's way out of reach for people like me. I've got student loans. I'm trying to pay rent. I, there's no way I could afford to live in that nice community, but I would like to. And I think we should build more housing there so housing prices go down. I don't think we should be trying to inflate those housing prices. Additionally, you know, I think that property rights are also important. I think that one of the great things about this great country and our how awesome we are is that we respect individual rights. And I think we should respect property owners' rights to do something with their property, even if it's not popular among their neighbors. I mean, the the premise of like freedom of speech and these really amazing values is that I can say something, and I don't need to get the permission of my neighbors to say it. You know, we need to protect ideas, even if they're unpopular. I can worship whatever religion I want, even if my neighbors don't agree with that religion. I don't think that for private activities, I should have to ask for my permission from my neighbors to worship a god or listen to certain music I want. And I think property owners should be allowed to subdivide their lots, even if their neighbors don't like it. So this historic district would also violate property rights. And I think it's quite possible to protect historic districts without preventing development. Glendale YMB, we reject the premise of historic arguments. We reject the argument, we reject the premise of the argument for historic districts, that they that you need to protect an area with historic value from development. There are many dense cities in Europe, like Paris, or Milan, or London, or Rome, that have a lot more history than we do. And they have dense apartments right next to the Arc de Triomphe. I don't think anyone would suggest that we demolish all those beautiful apartments and replace them with single-family homes to protect the value of the arc. I don't think building apartments or building density in an area diminishes the historical value. So I think that the premise of what we're trying to do with historic districts, it's the incentives are backwards. We should make it easier for people to live in historic neighborhoods, not harder. And first of all, this, the process of historic designations.
That is your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a caller, and then we have two callers. All right, we have two callers. And then we do have to reopen one of the items we voted on. Staff just informed me that city manager cannot be an alternate for the Arroyo Verdugo Communities JPA. So we're going to have to figure out who will serve in that capacity. All right, let's go to the callers, and those are the last two callers for oral communication.
Our first caller is Fernando. Roll down. Fernando, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Thank you, members of the council. I noticed that the mayor's not there, but that's fine. Members of the council, I have to agree with the first person. You know, we cannot just continue to build buildings without at least having a more of a leeway because unfortunately, the the issue with Glendale is this. We have three types of levels of people. We have the lower class, the middle class, and the higher class. What do I mean by that? Because unfortunately, you focus more on on the rich businesses, which is fine. You focus more on the on the on the lower-class people. But what about the middle man, which is what I am? Unfortunately, you know, I can only pay rent, for example, $1,800, $1,900. And not only that, most of the apartments here in Glendale are not. And not only that, most of the apartments here in Glendale are not wheelchair accessible. And if they are wheelchair accessible, they are too darn high. I, I'm asking for two things. A reminder that we do need to build a, a disability advisory group for the mayor and the council. That's one. So that we can, so you can help us disabled and seniors live in affordable housing, even those in middle class. That's all I ask, members of the council. That's one. Number two, of course, we have to make sure, like what the gentleman said, we can't just keep building more buildings and not think about, about those who can't afford it because of their income and all. And I plan to vote on Proposition 32 when the vote, voting time comes, because I'd like to make sure there is rent control in the city of Glendale. And that is my two cents on that, members of the council. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Next caller.
Thank you. Our final caller is Ray Shelton. Ray, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm calling to ask the council to consider speaking to your clerk about her constant reference to the indigenous peoples in her invocation. The indigenous peoples in this area obviously came from somewhere else. However, they were semi-nomadic Stone Age primitives. They did not own land, nor did they have the concept of ownership. They did not have a written language, and moved about as simple hunters and gatherers. Those indigenous peoples were assimilated long ago by the Spanish, and that assimilation had nothing to do with the United States. The greatest cultural achievement of these primitive peoples were being able to weave grass baskets. So why does the city clerk continue to invoke these people in an invocation? Well, first, she wants to virtue signal to her fellows as she climbs the political ladder. Second of all, it is to integrate the United States. It's an attempt to shame and blame Americans. But why would you want to shame and blame innocent Americans? Because guilty people are easy to control. When you speak about indigenous peoples in an invocation, you are indicating a worship of the primitive, of the irrational. The United States stands for civilization, for reason, for technology, and for science. So if your city clerk wants to praise semitive, primitive Stone Age, literally Stone Age, that's the only tools they had were stones, then I suggest she put down her iPhone and her computers, her glasses, her clothing, and go and live in the grass and dirt, which is where these primitive peoples lived. They lived and died in the dirt. They did not own this land. They wandered around. They were human beings, of course, but that has nothing to do with modern America. This is just an attempt to tear down and divide. In fact, there are no Native Americans left. Any person who drives a car, wears clothing, uses medicine, has been assimilated into the American culture, just as I, a descendant of Native Americans, have assimilated fully. Dancing around, chanting is not culture. It's just simple chanting. So I hope that the city council would admonish the city clerk to please respect America, America's achievements, and focus on America rather than virtue signaling. Thank you.
All right. So we have one item, 8C2, which was for the appointment of an alternate. I would like to have a motion to reconsider. Would like.
So moved.
And who will second that? Seconded. Let's have a roll call on that to reopen this item.
Okay, Councilmembers Carpetian.
No, me first.
Sorry. Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatyan and Mayor Protam Kasakian.
Yes, thank you. So is there anyone, you had mentioned, Councilmember Brotman, that the mayor wanted to serve as alternate to that?
She did not.
She did not want to serve as alternate to that.
I mean, she marked down the things she wanted to do, and that was not one of them, so.
What was the issue? It can't be a staff?
It cannot be a staff person, from what I understand. A staff person or something?
As long as the person is a staff person. It's written into the bylaws.
I will just say, you probably won't have to attend, because I go to all of them, but, you know, it's possible I could get sick, so.
No one is jumping at the opportunity. You know, I'm happy to put myself as the alternate in case emergency. But if there are any of my colleagues have a stronger preference, I'm happy to defer to them.
I'll second your motion.
All right, so.
The interest of time.
I'll move it with the original motion with that amendment.
Councilmember Carpetian will second it.
All right. Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatyan and Mayor Protam Kasakian.
Yes, thank you. Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I did forget at the outset of the meeting to request to have item brought back, and I'll forward language to the city manager, a resolution calling on our State Department to press the government of Azerbaijan to release all hostages that it is holding in its jails illegally against international law. And I'd like to have that agendized for a new business discussion in the coming weeks. All right, thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
All right, thank you. Good night and good luck.